Welcome, and I am Leonard Diggins, and I'm calling you to board at this meeting of the Town's Select Board on Wednesday, September 28th, 2022. And I will not confirm-
Twenty years later than that.
What was that?
You said 2022?
I said 2022. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's a 20, I thought I said 2022, okay, 2022. I'm select, and I will not confirm that all members of persons anticipated on agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative.
Yeah, I'm on.
I am here in 2022.
John Hurd.
Yes.
Steve DeCorcy.
Yes.
Eric Thomas.
Here, in here.
Seth, when I call you, please respond in affirmative. Sandy Bullock.
Here.
Buckeye.
Yep.
Ashley Meyer.
Yes.
Tonight's meeting of the Town's Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, signed into law on July 17, 2022, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation until March 20, I'm sorry, March 31st, 2023. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being recorded and also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the Town's website. Persons participating via Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both new participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow posted agenda materials also found on the Town's website using the Novus Agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. So let's see how much of the Town's business we can get tonight, and now we'll move on to item number two on tonight's agenda, and that is an introduction of our new planning director. And I'll turn that over to Sandy Bullock.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are very lucky to have a new talented and experienced director of our planning department, Claire Ricker. She's here tonight to say a few words and answer any questions you have. I'll let her talk a little bit about her experience, but she comes to us recently from Lowell with a nonprofit, a community development corporation, before that with the city, and before that plenty of other experience. She and I met today for the first time at our regular meeting. I think we're both excited about the things that the planning department is going to do and that she's going to lead us to do. So without blabbing further, I think it's best to turn it over to Claire and let her introduce herself.
All right. Thanks, thank you very much, manager. Thank you, board, for having me here tonight. Again, my name is Claire Ricker. I'm the new director of planning and community development here. I've been on the job about a week and a half. It has been a very busy week and a half, and just a lot of information to take in, and, you know, obviously, the day-to-day operations of the town, so I've been working along with extraordinarily talented staff downstairs. They have been really wonderful, and everybody in the town has given me such a warm welcome. I've already connected with a few members of the community who've reached out and welcomed me to Arlington as well. It's been just, just very warm welcome, you know, everybody so far has been really nice and very supportive. I know, you know, that, it has been, it's, I'm, I'm, that said, it's clear to me that Arlington is a community that is thoughtful, engaged, passionate. I'm excited to bring my experience and skills here to help the community meet their planning and development goals and aspirations. I've come into you from the city of Lowell. The last two and a half years, I was a real estate director for a community development corporation. It was a little hectic during the pandemic. We still managed to cut the ribbon on 44 units of veterans' preference housing in Havrell, nine units of veterans' preference housing in Drakett, and then break ground on a 27-unit property in the city of Lowell. I don't know if anybody here is a fan of this old house, but my Drakett project was featured, you know, this, in this, in their last season. Thank you. The town of Drakett actually gave the Coalition for a Better Acre a schoolhouse that we used on, did a beautiful, beautiful historic restoration. Prior to that, I was with the city of Lowell. I started there as their urban renewal project manager and moved to be the chief design planner. I managed development and design, a lot of infrastructure projects. We could have built a $40 million parking garage, almost 900 spaces. I managed that project. We did a reconfiguration and a redesign of the Lord Overpass, which was a massive vehicle-oriented piece of infrastructure, a couple of bridges. We, we called it the Big Phil. We brought it all to grade and were able to do a separated bus lane. We had so much ride away, we were able to do that. That was another wonderful, wonderful project, I think, in the city of Lowell. Prior to that, I was with the city of Holyoke, which was out in Western Mass, you know, obviously with its own challenges. It was a great, great learning experience. I mean, essentially, what I heard was, if you see something you want to do, write a grant and get it done. So we did. That was really sort of the mandate there. And I was able to do hazardous materials and asbestos remediation in one of the mills, leading to the Wynn Development Corporation, then went out to Holyoke and built the first housing, the first housing, the first mill housing project in Holyoke. We didn't even have any restored mills. Now, in Lowell, we're out of mills. They have just developed their last one, and so that is really the culmination of 50 years of planning. It's slow, it's slow work, but very fulfilling, especially with a, with a community that's, that's committed to it, such as I've seen in Arlington so far. So we've got a lot of work to do, and I think, I think we're going to get it done. I think we're really going to be able to put together to deliver some really good projects, you know, and as well as, you know, as well as establishing good programs and, you know, like I said, meeting the goals that are so clearly laid out in the planning documents.
Great, oh, very impressive so far. So, so I'm just going to go down the line, because I'm assuming that every member's going to want to say something, and so I'm going to start with Mr. Hurd.
Well, welcome. When we receive your information, that's cool, I'm for that position, we're definitely impressed with your resume and your qualifications and how those mesh into the planning directives that we have in Arlington. I'm sure you've seen so far, if you've done some research in your first week, you get a lot of, a lot of requests and a lot of discussions about affordable housing, and I think that's been something that we've struggled with over the past couple of years, but it's something that's both from a town perspective and resident perspective, a lot of discussions have been had, and it sounds like that's right up your alley. So we're looking forward to having some discussions with you, me and town staff, and seeing how we can use your experience and role with some of the efforts that we've had the past couple of years to try to identify affordable housing. It's a tough needle to thread in Arlington, but, you know, that's what we've been working on for the past couple of years, and the best strategy is to do that, and again, I think your experience really touches on that, and among other things, all the many things that the planning department does. Welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
When we were speaking briefly before the meeting, I was really touched by something you said, which was that you missed municipal government, so welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
I think that we are blessed to have senior leaders and all, so many employees in town who really have a passion for this work. People don't do it for the money, they don't do it for everyone to be nice to them every single minute of, of the day, but they do it because they welcome tough questions, they welcome creative challenges, and we have a lot of those. In addition to housing, which my colleague just ably said, I think that economic development is another really big and exciting challenge that we have, and it's ripe for really creative people. We are thrilled to have you for that reason, thrilled to have a really strong team that you, that's here in place for you to lead and to work with, and I can't wait to see what happens next.
Thank you.
Mr. Corcy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to echo my colleagues' comments and welcome you to Arlington, and you mentioned your experience in Lowell and Holyoke, I was impressed you also had experience in Cambridge, experience in Newton, and you bring all of those experiences to the job here. We're really excited to have you, and I will say, I've been in two conversations this week with, with individuals outside of town who had heard you came to Arlington, and they spoke very highly of you, and that is really wonderful to hear, and we're really excited to have you and look forward to working with you.
That's great to hear, thank you.
Sure.
Welcome again. Very excited, as you said, you have an exemplary staff down in the planning department. Arlington's very, very fortunate to that, and thankfully, and thank the town manager for hiring the planning director, that's definitely right up there, same high bar, same thing as Mr. DeCorcy, didn't get to speak to Lou, but I spoke to two or three other people who had very stellar things to say about you, so, which, yeah, that would have mattered anyways, but it certainly wasn't, as I said to you earlier, the nine-years journeyman, journey person plays in there. And just sort of echoing what my colleagues have said, definitely affordable housing, I know you've already gotten a sense for that, CDBG, Opera is very heavily enmeshed in that. One of the things I think we'll be looking for is going through what we have done because of Opera funding, knowing that that money's coming to an end, and how we augment that or correctly finish and phase it out. And then the other thing that we're all definitely concerned about, which nobody's going to make a huge dent in, which I understand, but it's more of a demonstration, is economic development. I really think Broadway, the industrial zone, for years, every town manager we've had, I've said, you know, can we get a planning director that maybe has relationships with flag companies? We've now moved forward in terms of our workforce with, you know, workbar and, you know, shared office space and things like that. And like I said, we're not going to be able to do like our adjacent neighbors, like a Belmont, Burlington, Cambridge, and be able to get that much more business revenue, but it's something that definitely, I know the citizens and other businesses always look toward. I don't know if you have any thoughts on anything that, and I also want to let you know, Frank Callahan, Arlington resident, president of the building trades, he's on the permanent town building committee, he's been instrumental with the other members of, we have a fantastic permanent town building committee in terms of free expertise that we couldn't afford, but that's definitely someone, you know, you should keep in your back pocket, because he's a good resource. But I don't know if you have anything you, or if you want to hear from the chairman first and then comment, so welcome.
Okay, sure. So we're, we need to make a very key hire in this department, which will be the economic development coordinator. I think, you know, I reached out to HR today, we have a few applicants, I'd like to see more applicants. If possible, we could keep that listing open a little longer. I'd like to get it out in a few more places, because I do think that we do need a good, robust process to get the right person in here to do the kind of economic development that, that the town is looking to do. I am interested in economic development. Certainly, I've had experience as an affordable housing developer, but I've also had quite a bit of experience of disposition of public property to private developers, assisting private developers in getting, you know, any land issues cleared up in terms of transfer, you know, to transfer them public property or any easement issues or things like that. That was part of my job when I worked, when I worked in Lowell. We really focused a lot on Lowell's sort of, you know, primary development area. They had kind of, I would call it the luxury of a big vacant spot as well. They did some master planning there, form-based code, and it was really part of my job to sell the district, to say, hey, you know, we have these great parcels, we've set the table, we've done a lot of site work here, who can we get in here that's going to do, that's, that's going to provide a use that the city is looking for. It's a, it's a challenge, I think it's going to be a little bit of a challenge in Arlington. Arlington is a streetcar suburb, it's always, you know, sort of, even historically, been based around residential, even residential business to some extent. I think that said, we, we really need to get out there and see what's available. The pandemic has kind of cleared the table, and it's, and it's time to get down, you know, to, to start to look at some of these storefronts, start to look at some of the, you know, you know, some entrepreneurs. I think we need to, I don't want to get too specific, but I think we should talk to some more breweries and then things like that. You know, there's, there's a lot of work that can be done there, and I'm certainly, definitely excited about getting out more in the community. I've already met with Beth Locke, who's the head of the, the chamber, and she's talked a bit about, you know, the, the 250-year, the, you know, it's called the semi-quinsentennial, I practiced. And, you know, she said, hey, why, you know, let's do something with that, I mean, what is Arlington Lexington Concord? I mean, we are right in there, so I think that's an opportunity that we shouldn't miss or shouldn't let us pass by, and, you know, certainly, there's a lot of other great, great ideas and creative suggestions in the planning documents, but I agree, it should be absolutely a focus.
Excellent, I know Mr. Hurd's ears perked up when he heard the quintet.
I had to say that word a few times. Now we just call it the 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we'll have, we'll talk again in the future, thank you. Welcome.
Yes, indeed, welcome, and one of those plans is Connect Arlington Plan, and I'm very much interested in that, because I'm a transportation guy on the board with my own history with the MPA, right over the Forsyth Committee, I'm also on the Boss Region, that's probably a planning organization, and so, as you probably know, transportation's the key, you know, I mean, it will determine the kind of development you have, both business-wise and kind of, the, the kind of residential area you have, whether it's really geared towards single occupancy vehicles or, or transit, and so, we've been waiting, you know, for, for our new planning director, so that we can try to make some progress with that plan, and certainly have some ideas, and this is a town that has lots of ideas, I mean, and you'll quickly find out, I mean, that there are lots of people with lots of ideas, and one of the things we're pushing with the civic engagement group is that we really have so much staff, I mean, and so, you can bring ideas, either dump them, or you can try to make those ideas happen, and by that, I mean, think a hundred of pilots, I mean, just think of what you can do, I mean, for staff, in conjunction with staff, and you're not really taking a lot of staff's time, but also trying to move forward, the exploration of the idea, and one of the ideas that has had some movement is the development of the Broadway corridor. There was a contest called the Broadway Design, Broadway Corridor Design Contest, I mean, and it generated some interesting ideas, and, and there's a recording of the contest itself on ACMI, and I'll break a little news here and say we're going to do a forum on that on the first of November. The time hasn't been decided yet, it's seven thirty, eight, seven thirty, eight o'clock, you know, and, and so far, it seems like at the town day, and there's lots of interest in it, and so, we'll see what comes of that, but it leads to me, that was a project that originated as an article, I mean, it was really resubscribed, I mean, a town meeting put it on it, and, and we wanted to go forward on it, but this was just a limitation of what staff could do at the time, you know, and so, the civic engagement group decided to push forward with it, and, and the contest happened, and I think we have some interesting results as, as, as a consequence, good consequence. Hearing you talk about things just really makes me want to see your CV, you know, and so, I don't know if I missed it, but if you have something you want to pass along, because, you know, it'll be interesting to see what other things you have done, because I'm sure what you told us is just a fraction of what you've done, and so, that may generate some ideas, and certainly give us some ideas of things that you are passionate about, or at least very knowledgeable about, and, and can, can work with us. So, I'm going to be a little interactive, you know, and, and maybe put you on the spot a little bit, you know, so, based on what you've done, and what you know about Arlington so far, I mean, what would you say is something that we could stand to do, you know, and even if you want to go beyond that, based on what you may want to do, it's like, what is it you think that we could stand to do, and if you don't want to answer that now, we can come back to this for the time.
No, no, I think, you know, one of the things I, so when I was preparing for the interviews, which was a fantastic process, by the way, very, very rigorous, I was going through the plans, including Connect Arlington, and I noticed, very, not, not hidden necessarily, but certainly, I think should have been more celebrated, was the reduction in single occupancy trips in vehicles, significant, like, almost 10%. I think this is something that Arlington could really hang their hat on, if you were to get below, say, 60, say, 50, what an accomplishment that would be to get people out of their cars. I've, that was, you should be commended, absolutely on that. I think that there's a willingness here, you know, to engage in, in something like that, hey, let's get out of our cars and, and, you know, do some bikes, do some walking, if not christening. But, you know, you know, certainly, you know, some of the, some of the folks here. My initial impressions are that there are, there's better coordination, or some, excuse me, I think some more coordination could be done between planning and city departments. I would like to have any plans, proposals, project proposals reviewed internally, I think, by more departments before they go to the redevelopment board or even the ZVA. I think there is a lot of comment, there's a lot of work that could be done on those even before they go to a board, so that we don't end up with someone proposing a project and then having to redesign based on stormwater or something like that. We'll get that, you know, over to engineering before. So those are really kind of my first two ideas, you know, the single occupancy vehicle reduction of trips is, I think is an excellent goal, and then for me internally, how do we do project review, and how do we, you know, how do we deliver to the boards who are, you know, volunteering their time? How do we deliver a more complete project presentation that's been, you know, viewed and vetted by more departments?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So, so, well, what we're going to really go into is a lot.
I know, too, thank you.
And could I just ask, either Ms. Ricker or the town manager, I think there's something coming up, if people want to sort of have a meeting, agree with you, and I'm blanking on the date and time.
Tomorrow.
It's tomorrow at five. I believe it's on the first floor conference room, I'm not sure.
I think it's in the lions', here. It's in the building.
I believe it's in the lions' room, but there'll be signs.
I can tell you it is. All right, I remember reading that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we leave 5:00 p.m., I'm looking forward to that, too, right, so, thank you.
Thanks for reminding, you know, so, so we will now move on to item number three, the end-of-year budget report with the town manager and the controllers, may I say something to mention?
We will have Ida Cody, the town's comptroller, present this. It used to be that she and I would share presenting, but once I became manager, I told her that she had to do all the work, so that's what she's doing, and she'll do an excellent job. We have talked about the fact that the board's read everything, so I think I'll be shortened to the point, and then if you have questions, either or I would be glad to answer.
So this Cody, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Ida, good evening, Ida Cody, town comptroller. I will present the year-to-date budget report tonight. This is actually has a summary of revenue and expenditures for fiscal year '22, which ended on 6/30/2022. This is actually perfect timing for this, for this presentation, because last week, DOR certified our free cash, so these are final numbers, no more entries. The report, actually, the narrative part is very light, but it's packed with very useful information. I will try to give you the, just the essence of this 46 pages of numbers and percentages, and hopefully you'll find them useful. So as I said, DOR certified free cash last week in the amount of $15,009,12,078. This is an increase of $4.8 million over last year's free cash, and this increase is the combination of revenue surplus and appropriation turnbacks. We had revenue surplus in fiscal year '22 in the amount of approximately $4.5 million, and the appropriation turnbacks were $3.3 million. We can, if you would like, we can jump to the tables, actually. Right, so these are the expenditures, like I said, we turned back $3.3 million. Almost all departments spent their budgets at 90, between 97 and 99%. There are a few that turned back some funds, mostly in salaries, because we had vacancies caused by either retirements or resignations, and the new people were hired at a lower rate. Everything else is where it's supposed to be. I will just focus a little bit on the reserve fund. On the reserve fund, we had budgeted $1.7 million, and we had to do just two transfers this year, $10,000, it's actually on the other page, at the top. Yes, so we had, we only needed to do two transfers this year, $10,000 for the town manager's buyback, and also $200,000 to the fire department for, to cover the overtime. We didn't have to transfer any money to DBW for snow and ice, as the snow and ice budget was only over approximately $11,000, and the DBW had sufficient funds to cover this deficit. We did transfer $1 million from this, the reserve fund, there was an item that was reserved for the school department, we transferred it to the override stabilization fund, and then one was authorized in spring at the special town meeting. Next page, we have the articles. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, because as you know, this warrant articles, departments have two years to spend their appropriation. It doesn't necessarily have to be at a certain percentage, so they are within their budgets, and we only, we pay the bills as we get them. And we can move on to the general fund revenue, because this is more exciting. We actually turned back, we actually had a surplus of $4.5 million. In the report itself, I did cover some, in detail, some of the categories, but for the purposes of this presentation, I'm just going to focus on a few big items. The first one is the miscellaneous non-recurring account, and we got here $1.2 million. This is an account that we don't make an estimate for, we don't make a projection, because we never know what we're going to get. This is usually a one-time reimbursement, either from prior years from various vendors or a federal or a state one-time reimbursement. The next one that's large is the motor vehicle excise. We've exceeded the projection by $1.5 million, and this is because of a combination of the timing of commitments and the economic rebound. We also lowered this estimate by $5.75, $575,000. So, like I said, this, this category does have some commitments from fiscal year '21, which were posted in '21, '22, and collected this fiscal year. The next large item is the permits and licenses, which here, we, overall, we exceeded the projection by $1.5 million, but it's important to note that the main driver of this category is the building and wire permits. We had a really good year with a record collection of $2.8 million, and this is from both new constructions and also renovations. We had some large renovations. One of them, for example, was $1 million, and we had a few of $600, $500, $600,000 and $500,000. And now we get to the proverbial happy topic, the excise taxes, the hotel, motel and marijuana. Hotel was, we exceeded the projection by $200,000, but we're still not at the levels that we are pre-COVID. The meals, we had a record of $500,000, and this is a record, and it's a lot more than we've, we've been collecting pre-COVID, and marijuana, it's over, we had a surplus of $100,000, although we increased the, the projection, we still got more. One more, a large item, is the school Medicaid, which appears to be at 439% collection, but it's, again, this is the timing, and it's because the consultant, that's the billing for the school department, sent the, the reimbursement, but we didn't get it till 2022. So it was, it, it became part of this, this year's free cash. And the last one that I want to mention is the state aid. The state got a lot of money, and they actually spread the surplus, that they gave us in a total of $200,000, $40,000 for the veterans, $70,000 in homeless transportation, and tuition reimbursement, $80,000. So all this contributed to a good free cash. And if you have, if you don't have any questions, or if you want to save them for later, I can move on to the enterprise fund. to save them for later, I can move on to the enterprise funds, which are on this next page.
Let's just go on and finish the report, and we'll just go down the line, questions and comments.
Okay, so, so the enterprise funds are pretty straightforward, nothing really, nothing much discussed here. You have all the retained earnings listed on the report. AYCC, RINC, and REC recorded surplus revenues, and that's because they've been experiencing an increase in their, the demand for the services. Water and Sewer had a revenue shortfall, but that's because we had a wet summer last year. However, we spoke with the GPW director, and we will have a large commitment, and we will see good, a good collection this fall, because this, this summer was dry. And the Council on Aging has, had also a revenue shortfall of twenty-two thousand, but they also turned back sixteen thousand dollars. So that didn't really have a large impact on the retained earnings. And that concludes my report.
Great, great, Eda. Well, spending and more revenue summed up with that, it's a good year, Eda, but, but of course, we're going to be questions and comments. So once again, we're going to go, I see, I was going to go down the line, but you put your hand up.
Move your seat, then. I only have one question. What is school Medicaid? I don't think I've seen that term before.
This is a surplus that we get from the federal government for services that are offered to the, mostly to the students with special legs, such as speech therapy, nutrition, the direct services that we offer them to the students, and the federal government puts aside some funds, and they distribute them based on what we report and eligibility.
And so is the collection because we weren't billing, could we hire a consultant to help us out and weren't billing timely in prior years and recovering from prior years, or is it?
There, there was some issue of timing. So it was higher this last year than it normally would be. It was lower the previous year than it normally would be. I think it will flatten out, but it all had to do, I think, with the timing of our, through our consultant filing reimbursement requests.
Well, it sounds like the consultants earned their fee. Thank you.
Second, second, Mr. Mahan. Do you have any questions or comments?
Just want to say, I want to thank Ms. Cody and our town manager and his former iteration as deputy town manager and chief financial officer role, that when we initially started getting these reports, I know when I first got on the board, it was something that I requested for a long time, and then they started coming in and getting fine-tuned, and every request that I've had along the way over the years certainly has been incorporated and has made it much easier for I, for myself to look at these and be able to understand them. So I do appreciate Mr. Poole or Ms. Cody for going the extra steps for all of us, not just myself. I know my colleagues also have comments along the years on how this is done. And one of the ease of this report is able to not only get the summary that we did from Ms. Cody, but looking at it ourselves, like AYCC and the recreation department, that's really exciting, that, you know, they're sort of starting to rebound, not for the money aspect of it, but for the program aspect of it. The money's good, too, but I definitely stand by the program aspect. And I do see that our, I think it was our investments were at about a hundred-and-thirty percent. Is that as a result of the treasurer's office, or is that the comptroller or a combination thereof?
Well, the, it is because towards the end of the year, the interest rates went up a little, and that helped with the, with the final revenue numbers. But we've also had a conservative estimate to begin with, and that's why it, it looks like we've collected a lot more.
That is within the purview of the treasurer.
And one sort of obscure, which I don't even know if it's a fund anymore, but for many, many years, and I know that the previous town manager came up with a model around the municipal building trust fund, because that had such a large amount of money for so long, that really was kind of stagnant, in my opinion. Is that something that's still in play, or did the previous town manager and previous board come up with a framework that that's no longer really something to look towards?
That does still exist. You will see, when we put out the report for the long-range planning committee on Friday, at the bottom of that sheet, we always list how much is in that fund. It's, I'm going to say it's about seven-hundred thousand dollars now. We do keep it in case we have a claim for a loss on one of our buildings that exceeds that we have to pay a deductible on, and that our insurance won't cover all. Mostly we have not had really big claims that way, so we've just sort of kept it as a reserve in case. And I think the last time we used it was three, four years ago. I think there was some flooding to the high school, but that was about it. Mostly, we just let it sit there.
Just a quick question on that. Is that, A, in here and I missed it, B, in here and it's incorporated somewhere else, or C, not in here? If that's the case, could it be added?
So this, it's C, not in here.
Good. I was just saying, did I fall asleep and miss it? Okay.
What this report has to date focused on is our, our revenue and our expenditures. We could, we could add a separate report, particularly at the end of the year. I think it would be useful to show fund balances for how our funds go up and down. And I think, again, for an end-of-the-year report, that would be the appropriate time, because that's, that's when we calculate all those things. The revenue and expenditures we do every quarter, the fund balances, like the one you're talking about, we'll calculate at the end of the year.
Okay. And so this is the end-of-the-year report for 2022. So just moving forward, we can do that. I don't need that because you just gave us a report on it, but if that could be incorporated for next year's end-of-the-year report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I can, I can also give you the balance for this fund. It's six-sixty-one, six-hundred-and-sixty-one, eight-sixty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Cody, for the presentation this evening and for the detailed memo. And I'm just going to repeat something that you put in the memo regarding expenses. All departments stayed within their budgets, and that's something that I think townspeople will like to hear in the, you know, the monitoring and the diligent work of our department heads and yourself and Mr. Poole. So thank you for that. Just a question on page five, under general fund revenue, the property tax line, and the amount received at one-hundred-and-forty-one-point-seven million is about one-point-two million less than what was budgeted. And I imagine it might be exemptions, there might be some abatements in there. Are there any receivable issues that, that are hanging out there for property taxes, or is that just some, some other factors that show this difference?
No, we actually have an excellent record of tax collections here in Arlington. I've worked in other municipalities, and I'm actually impressed that every year we are at ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. That this is, this is excellent, ninety-nine percent. It's a timing. We will be getting this money. We don't have any issues with the receivables. We usually collect them in time. And whatever we have that's not being paid, the treasurer will put in tax title, and sooner or later, we get it. But for the most part, we really haven't had any issues with the tax collection, even during COVID.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I was glad to see that the free cash was higher than expected. How much higher is it wasn't than we expected it to be?
If I could, in the last couple of years, we've had about eleven million dollars in free cash, so it was about four-plus million dollars greater. There were some one-time events that I think we can't count on going forward. Part of it, as Ms. Cody said, was the timing of our receipt, of our motor vehicle excise taxes, which had to do a lot with the timing of when we got bills from the registry of motor vehicles and could send them out for FY '21 and FY '22. And so when they came, we basically got a little bit of '21's money in '22. So I don't expect to see that as high again. The other significant issue was licenses and permits. I do think that Mike Champ has been doing an excellent job collecting those and verifying that the costs of building here is, in fact, what people should be paying, is requiring affidavits from contractors. I am a little nervous about that going forward, only because as interest rates go up, you're likely to see some slowdown in both home sales and in renovation projects. So a nice bump for us, but we'll be keeping an eye on that. And then I think the third thing that we are not likely to see again is those non-recurring revenues, which really had to do with our getting reimbursements from, from the Fed through the CARES Act. And it's just the timing of things that we had spent, and then the timing of the federal money coming into us, that's not going to recur. So I think in, going forward, it's likely to be that our regular amount is going to be back toward that eleven million figure. Eda, is there anything you want to add on that?
No, these are the main areas which we're not, most likely we're not going to see in the future, especially if the non-recurring was the big one, was one-point-two million dollars. So we cannot rely on that.
Does this, and then some of this is timing issues, does that additional free cash have more than a marginal effect on our long-range plan for projected deficits and et cetera?
We'll see that Friday.
We're presenting.
I'm happy to defer that. Always keep them wanting more, that's what I say.
It has had some effect. We are still working on final numbers, waiting for just some things to come in to present on Friday, and we will be able to talk about that Friday morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and actually, you answered my question with, what you said about Mike Champ with the, the fees made out for, for our building, and enhancements. So, I am, I'm pretty much, I'm happy with what I see, Eda. And I'm going to ask three kind of general questions, which do not have to be answered now. Maybe it'll be better to ask them, answer them maybe when we do the first quarter report, or as we get prepared to do the budget. These come to you by means of, well, she's not a colleague, but she's actually on the select board in Brookline, and we talk a lot of things at times. We just understand how things are going on in our towns. It'll be interesting to see how we, you know, maybe answer these questions year to year, you know, and certainly how we may compare to Brookline. So the two questions are, what have you seen as the biggest challenges, you know, with respect to financing the town, you know, and budgeting? And what have been, you think, the biggest accomplishments being of the town in the last two years with respect to our finances being? And I know this was a little pie to the sky, but maybe not an unlimited budget, but certainly a bigger budget. I mean, what do you think the town could maybe do, if we had a, the potential of a larger budget, if you have a larger budget, I mean, what is it that we could do that you would think would be very helpful to the town? So, so like I said, these are three, three questions that's to come out now. I don't really expect an answer to them now. If you want to play with them, fine, but if not, let's, let's maybe talk about them.
Yeah, I, I will give a couple of very quick answers to your questions, and I think these are conversations, particularly as we look at the potential for an override that we'll be discussing a lot. I think our strength has been, as I think Eda indicated, we have very strong financial departments. We have an excellent comptroller, an excellent treasurer, and an excellent assessor. They really do a good job. We do an excellent job of collecting the money that we're owed. So I think, and the town has been that way for a long time, and there's a strong track record. So I think the residents can feel confident that the people who are looking after their money are doing a good job. We are continuing to move forward to try to automate things, put things online. We're in the process of looking at an online permit system so that people can apply for building permits and other things online, which I think will speed things up and make it easier for contractors and so forth. So we're, I think there's a long history, and we're continuing those in terms of being modern and efficient. I think, did you ask about shortcomings? I can't really think of any now. So, I mean, to be, I don't mean to be glib, but I think, I will say there's been some challenges we've had with some of our software and some of our vendors that has, for example, we've had trouble connecting with the registry of motor vehicles to mark people who are late in paying their tickets and so forth. That's been a big struggle for the treasurer's office. We're continuing to try to get it resolved, and over time, I think we will see an increase in our ticket revenue on these sheets if we can get that resolved. But it's, it's been a difficult issue. And finally, I remember I had lunch with a new town manager from Watertown the other day, and he was telling me that they regularly have five million dollars in free cash, in, excuse me, in new growth every year. We're lucky if we hit a million. That's just the difference in the kind of community we are. And so I think over the long run, making sure that we continue to do the kind of things that Claire Rickers was talking about, developing our commercial corridors. Hopefully, we can increase those. But we are just a very residential community, and that is fundamental to why we have a structural deficit in our budget, and we'll continue to work on that.
And there was challenges, so, so, so thank you very much, Ed. And with that, a motion to receive by Mr. Hurd and a second by Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Mahan?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Thank you. And so, well, now, and thank you, Ms. Cody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Well, now we move on to this consent agenda. On it, we have the minutes of meetings, August 3, 2022, goal-setting meeting, August 22, 2022, and September 12, 2022. We also have, well, I guess, a vote authorizing police detail for November 8, 2022, by Julie Brazil, town clerk. And number six, a vote to receive study of the town office of the town clerk by Julie Brazil, town clerk. And seven, request a permit for Veterans Day Parade, Friday, November 11, by Jeff Jungle, Director of Veterans Services. And number eight, a reappointment term to expire on June 30, 2025, by the LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission, Andy Rubinson. So...
Who, who?
Second.
And so with the motion to approve by Ms. Mahan and a second by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Mahan?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Wong?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
And I'll just say on item number seven, item number six, I mean, the vote to receive the study of the office of the town clerk. There will be a lot more discussion about that after the election. The town clerk just wanted to get the report out to residents, sooner rather than later, since she had received the report, Ed. And so, so more to come.
And you, this may already have been completed for number seven on the Veterans Day Parade. As you know, traditionally, the chair gives the remarks, and the chair coordinates with our veteran instructor, Jeff Jungle, because he does do a really nice program. So if you haven't, going forward, if you could let him know which person to list to make the remarks on behalf of the board.
Sure.
Traditionally, it's the chair.
Sure, sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So, next, we have an appointment to the LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission, term to expire on June 30, 2025. Paloma Cotton Herman, is this, is Paloma here?
Hi there, yes.
Hi. How you doing?
Hi.
See you. And so, do you want to say a few words?
Yes, hi. It's wonderful to be here. My name is Paloma Cotton Herman. I use she, her, hers pronouns. And my wife and two daughters and I are closing in on a year of living in Arlington. We're so glad to be here. We're so glad to be here. And I was just, I was at my local coffee shop and saw that the LGBTQIA+ Commission was looking for commissioners. And I'm always one to want to sort of put down roots and invest in my community, and I was just very excited about the possibility. And attended Town Day with the Commission, and just been really excited about the momentum and the leadership in the Commission. And given my background in DE and I, and as an educator, and, you know, part of the LGBT community, I just thought, what a wonderful way to serve the community and get to know folks and continue to build community here. So it's wonderful to have the opportunity.
Thank you very much. And so I'll turn to my colleagues. Mr. Hellman?
I'd very much like to move approval. Welcome to Arlington. We are thrilled that you and your family are here. And it is always a special joy when a new resident dives in to get involved. I think you will find it rewarding. The members of the Commission are thrilled to reappoint Mr. Rubinson in our consent agenda just now. He has been an important part of that Commission's leadership, as have so many others. I think you have a great time, and I look forward to hearing the next great things that you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
I'll second that motion and just say welcome. We rely heavily on a lot of our boards and commissions, and this one certainly is, we rely on this commission to do a lot in town and is very active. So thank you for your willingness to give your time.
Welcome to you and your family. Thrilled to have you here in Arlington. I just sort of want to put a plug in. One of our previous colleagues, Dan Dunn, this was sort of his bailiwick with this committee, and it's sort of fallen by the wayside. And looking at your resume, it seems like you may have something that can at least evaluate the program to see if it's something that should be sort of continued or re-implemented, but really getting our young people involved with the committee. We also have, which Mr. Dunn sort of extended an association with, it's Mystic Valley Group that incorporates Arlington and other cities and towns for our young people, middle school, high school, that they have events. And just sort of taking advantage, my apologies, of your background and education and also dealing sort of with that clientele, with that age group, I'd be interested, and you don't have to answer this tonight, but is that something that perhaps you could sort of take a look at and pass and see where we are with it?
Absolutely. We've, I've spoken just initially with Susan and Lisa, the co-chairs, around like sort of where do you see areas of interest? And sort of like, education, you know, just seems like a really natural connection. Also, my daughters are four years old and eight months, so sort of a year.
God bless you.
You know, yes.
Anyone, whoever bless you. Sorry.
But just sort of heading into that K5 space, we're going to be at the Allen School, so just being excited about sort of newly entering the school system here. A lot of questions, a lot of excitement there. So absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve and welcome to Arlington, and we've had a good experience so far, and I know you'll add a lot to the Rainbow Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. And I've had a chance to meet you at one of the Rainbow Commission meetings, so already showing that you're great in addition to the group, ENF. Nice thing about going last is that they've said it all. And I'll just also add that there is going to be the picnic on Saturday, ENF.
Yes.
And it's going to be at Robbins Farm Park, right?
Yes, noon to two this coming October 1st. Absolutely will be there, so.
Great, great. So on a motion by Mr. Hellman and a second by Mr. Hurd to approve the appointment, Mr. Hahn?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corson?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for it.
So can I now move on to open forum? Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or a request. Anyone?
Yes, we do have one in advance. Two minutes, right?
Well, just take the list and then give it a few more seconds and then lock it down. So this time, we're going to try and get that clock inside the window. Got it? I'm seeing it.
It's Mr. Schlichtman. Will we be able to see it? Sorry.
Will he be able to see the clock?
Mr. Schlichtman, can you see the clock?
I cannot see the clock. I see the list, the appointments for the LGBTQ Commission. That's okay. I certainly can stay under three minutes.
That's fine. Just try and work on the technology, so.
Okay. Glad to help in any way I can. Paul Schlichtman, hi. Should I start?
Not just yet. We'll wait for Ashley. Or should we just?
Okay.
Well, I, I guess so. I'm trying to figure what he can see, what he can't see. I think he's seeing this, but.
Yeah, I'm seeing, I'm seeing the appointments too, so.
Oh, I see a teeny tiny clock in my upper right corner. It says 1:19 right now.
Can you see this?
No, I can't see it.
I'm still looking at your roll call on the LGBTQ appointments.
All right. Well, we'll just keep working on it. So we'll go ahead and get started, Mr. Schlichtman. So you have three minutes and 10 seconds.
I'll give back, I'll yield back the 10 seconds. Paul Schlichtman, speaking as a town meeting member from Precinct 9. On December 31, 2019, 1,002 days ago, my downstairs neighbor was struck and killed on the crosswalk on Chestnut Terrace. Last year's move towards improvements were delayed through December and into this year because the town was unable to send attachments to DPW, the state mass highway, and didn't do a follow-up, if you recall that incident. So this year, things that were promised have not yet been delivered, including restriping Chestnut Street and a flashing beacon at the Chestnut Terrace Crosswalk. And I want to quote to you the words of former town manager Adam Chaplinline that he wrote to me in an email on December 16. "I now see the lack of clarity in the matter. The installation of the RRFB, the rectangular flashing beacon, will go forward next construction season as part of the implementation of the other permanent improvements. It will not be contingent on further analysis." So we had a solid promise and a commitment of delivery of safety improvements on Chestnut Street, which the town has not done at this point. So I would like to ask that the Select Board place on the agenda for their next meeting a full report on the status of Chestnut Street and to urge the appropriate departments through your town manager to view this as a very high priority, because on December 31 of 2022, we will reach a three-year anniversary of this tragic death. And to have no substantive progress on the improvements that you adopted in June of 2021 would be a real shame and really puts the town in a very poor light. So please, put this on the agenda, make this a high priority, give us regular reports, and get this work done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlichtman. So next, we have Dre.
Good evening.
Hello?
Good evening. Elizabeth Dre, town meeting member in Precinct 10. I wanted to thank Ms. Cody for the budget explanation and all of that work. I just wanted to bring up one thing that I had noted and voiced some concern about the overtime budgets that seem to be well over the appropriated funds. So that the inspection department there, overtime was 106% over the appropriated fund. The fire department was 61% over, and the police department was 57% over. I know that is an ongoing problem, and I'm just wondering, what are these departments doing specifically to prevent, you know, this continued issue, especially as we face a huge override, just to cover basic services? And also, I would love to learn, in the police department budget, there was a category called other purchases, and that was 159% over budget. I would be wondering if there's a place that I could find out what that was actually spent on. And again, you know, this, I know overtime is hard, and I know it's hard to figure out, and I know it's hard to budget, but this is consistently a place where the costs are well over what we appropriate for them. And I am wondering what tangible actions these departments are doing to control that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we will now move on to item number, sure, item 10. Yeah. So discussion, filling the vacancy on the Board of Registers. So, see, Mrs. Brazil is here, Town Clerk. Hi.
Good evening. So if you would like, I can give you just a quick update. I was able to speak with the chairman of the Republican Town Committee this afternoon, and he does have a name that he can forward to Select Board to make an appointment at your next meeting, ideally.
Great. So I guess all you have to do is put it on the agenda, right, and it happens?
That's, it's wonderful how it all comes together, yes.
Nice. So, well, I guess we can keep this short and really sweet, unless someone wants to say something, in which case it'll still be short. But, all right. So we'll hear from them at some point, hopefully, before the election, right? That's the goal, is to have this all settled by the election.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sure you'll have the name this week, so not a problem.
Great. All righty. Well, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Stay around for us, but, is it for you on the?
Have a good night.
So we'll move on to item number 11, or the correspondence received section. So we have Arlington Community Electricity Contract Update by Mr. Coolard, Town Manager, and comments for the intersection at Park Avenue, Route 2, Frontage Roads by Petru Sofio, Elmore Street.
Move for seat.
Motion by Mr. Hurd.
Second.
A second by Mrs. Mahan. Yes.
This will sort of take care of some. Oh, is it? Popcorn's ready. Got to go get it. One of my questions under new business, which is here under correspondence receiving, I don't know if the town manager, either tonight or in the future, could give a quick brief sort of update to the community. People have been asking me since National Grid is projecting somewhere in the 50% increase, and Eversource is predicting somewhere 66% increase. People were asking me about the town's electricity company. Would they be, and some of that is in correspondence receiving encapsulated, but could you just sort of not read it word for word, but just give sort of a brief update on that, if that's all right, Mr. Chair?
Sure, sure.
That was one of my new business. I'll take care of it.
I'd be happy to. I think it's an excellent question. We, so as the letter says, and just for the people at home, we are starting a new contract, a new two-year contract in November for the electricity that people can buy through our municipal aggregation, our ACE program. There are several tiers of how green you can get that. There will be an increase in those rates, but because we bought electricity back in the spring and locked in rates before things really went out of hand, we are pretty confident that those rates will continue to look as attractive as they have in the past. We've saved on the order of $5 million to ratepayers in Arlington through this program to date. And I am obligated to say that past savings does not guarantee future savings, understanding that. We will know Eversource's new rates also in November. That's when they go out. We have seen that National Grid just did go out and renewed their rates. We don't have National Grid for electricity. We have them for gas, but not for electricity. Their increase was 62%, which I think reflects the fact that energy markets all around the globe are much, much higher than they have been. So I, again, I won't predict what Eversource is going to do in the next month when they buy electricity, but I am just aware that the market is a lot higher than it was when we bought electricity back in the spring. So we are sending that mailer out to all the people who get electricity through our aggregation program, through the ACE program, and allow them to, if they don't want to change, they will just continue on the program. If they want to change their level of greenness, they can do that. And I think we will continue to offer a very competitive and I would hope cost-saving program to people going forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, yes, Mr. Hurd, I mean, Mr. Hellman?
Thank you. I appreciate Ms. Mahan inviting the opportunity to just talk more about this. I think it's really important. And, you know, I think this may be an opportunity if Eversource comes in with significantly higher rates. This may make the ACE program more attractive to more people and may provide an incentive for people to go higher on the scale. So I'm really grateful, Mr. Manager, to the team who responded to the Select Board's urging of being as aggressive as possible with the default rate of percentage of renewables, I believe, is not 30%, which is what a lot of advocates were really urging us to do. I want to specifically, you were involved, our former town manager, resolve, Ms. Talia Foxer, Sustainability Manager, has been doing outstanding work, and I want to give her some credit for that as well, for not only putting this together, but really communicating this and working with community advocates. So it's one of the best things about Arlington. I'm so proud of what we have done for sustainability, and this is just a real win, and I didn't want the moment to pass without communicating that.
And as you pointed out in the letter too, that we had asked for, I think, just three categories, but that we did end up with that fourth category because I guess the suit or ruling of in Pittsburgh, I mean, that I guess DPU said that they really needed to have that fourth category, otherwise they would be dropped from the program and would have to get back in, and there was concern that they would come back in.
There.
So, that's understood.
Yes, there, if we made any changes to our tiers, we would have been required to make people re-enroll.
Right.
And instead of doing that, for the time being, we're keeping the tiers we had. There is some speculation that DPU may change their view on that issue going forward, but for the time being, we're just keeping the tiers as we've had them all on, which offer a lot of great green ways to save.
Right, right. And you did talk so much that you're going to send a letter out, and I don't know what's appropriate to put in the letter beyond just the what has happened, but I did notice that for those at 100%, it's two cents higher, you know. And if it's appropriate to just express appreciation for the fact that those folks have gone 100% and that it really does make a difference, you know, to our goal, to help with heat energy and a better environment. know, to, to our goal, be to help with, be create energy and, and a better environment, I suggest, I just put it out there as an idea, you know, uh, because sometimes just telling people thank you goes a long way, you know, uh, saying if it doesn't cost too much to do that, uh, that's all. So, so on, uh, motion by Mr. Hurd and a second by Ms. Mahan. Oh, one other thing, uh, the letter from Petru, let's send that to Tac, you know? So, on a motion by Mr. Hurd and a second by Ms. Mahan, Mr. Hurd, Mr. Meyer?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsey?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Mr. United Spohr?
So I think it's safe to assume we don't need the second open forum, you know? So we'll move on to new business. Uh, Ms. Meyer?
No new business, thank you.
Okay.
No new business, thank you.
Mr. Poehler?
No new business, thank you.
Mr. Corsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just briefly, for, for the board's benefit, that we are going to have a meeting this Friday morning of the Long Range Planning Committee. It's the first one this fall. Um, Mr. Poehler and, and, um, will be presenting new revenue estimates, and we'll have our first discussion with the representatives of the FinCom and, uh, School Committee. And I would imagine in October, we may, may talk to you about putting an agenda, write them on, to start talking about where we go all, all of the next year, but that, that's gonna be this Friday at eight.
Thank you. Ms. Mahan?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll, I'll try to be really brief. Um, received communication on the, um, nineteen to twenty-five thousand dollar, um, Save the Alive Brook grant through the DCR. Um, it seems like the clock is now kind of ticking on that in terms of, you know, where those monies might come from. Um, I, I'd hate to lose this opportunity, so if you all were asking me, and I'm, I'm hoping we can make it happen, and I think a decision needs to be made sooner rather than later, I'd point to the surplus in free cash for the nineteen to twenty-five thousand, perhaps the municipal building trust fund and/or anything else. I don't know if, um, that's something the manager wants to. I don't mean to put you on the spot, or you want to get, get back to us on that, or?
No, if I may.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, we have, we are in receipt of a state grant of forty-six some one thousand dollars, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars of which we can use toward this, um, DCR study of the Alive Brook, uh, which matching with the other money that is out there is basically gonna be our contribution. So we've been working with them on the specifics of what they're going to, um, study, but the last I spoke with, it was, uh, David Morgan and Gwen Channard, who were moving forward to get that done. Uh, it's my understanding that we are going to do those studies, and, um, so what I will do is double-check on the progress of that and, uh, report back to the board.
Okay, and what I will do is, I just was playing catch-ups, giving my email. I did see an email with this subject line from Gwen Spieth. I have not opened it up, and what I'll do is I'll forward it to, to the town manager tomorrow morning, if not tonight, as well as the Select Board office, and ask it, them to forward to my colleagues as an FYI. Um, and, and the email may, I haven't read the body of it. It may say, um, thanks, you've identified it, you know, we're gonna get the matching fifty, but the subject line seemed to, but I haven't read it, so I'll make sure I do that. Um, as we get into November, um, and we touched on it very briefly, and don't necessarily, I don't want, can't have any specifics tonight with the, um, electricity rates and projected with, um, EverSource, um, and the town has done an exemplary job, um, through Health and Human Services and through the Planning Department for, you know, when we hit the winter months, people need, you know, we have a program for, um, various utilities, um, uh, moving forward with the projected increased costs, at least by, um, that I'm aware of, that have been sort of put out there stated by EverSource and, and, um, National Grid, as well as, I don't anticipate this getting done until, um, the culmination of midterm elections, but it could, because you never know. I know the, um, Senate and House down in Washington are talking of, uh, maybe the president proposing or, or subcommittee, someone from the Senate or the House, two to three hundred billion dollars for this anticipated increased utility costs in the upcoming winter season. Um, and I expect that if and when that does go through, and it seems like it may, um, although you don't know it's Senator Manchin, him not getting something else, but that's all, and, but I, uh, I just would ask, come November, whatever opportunities we can give to residents, um, and if there's businesses, I anticipate if we did get federal funding, it would be similar to a CARES Act, um, allocation, uh, which would go through the, uh, Planning Department and the CDB Subcommittee and, and the, and the town manager. But if for some reason that does not come through, if the board could just be provided and/or reminded of, um, what is available through Health and Human Services and/or, um, the Planning Department, because I anticipate we're, we're going to be getting that. Um, you already did that. I can take care of that tomorrow. And then I, once again, I would just put a, uh, plug in, and I know I've had conversations with the manager and, um, with, uh, Mr. DeCorcy. I'd love to have with the rest of the board, but that would violate the open meeting law. Um, still getting questions, and I believe there are still, uh, conversations in Zoom and/or in-person meetings regarding the, uh, the retirees and COVID pay reimbursement. I believe to date, uh, everybody else, uh, including department heads, um, have, uh, as well as town employees, um, union employees, have, um, received money from that, from the, I think it's thirty-three point seven or thirty-four point seven million Opera funding. But, um, I kind of feel like we're sort of penalizing our very small pool of retirees, and I'm, I'm, I'm putting the school side aside because my hat's just for, um, the town side. Um, I know they're still waiting for an answer on, on that, so I would just ask through the chair, through the chair to the town manager when it is appropriate, because I know this is something that hasn't fallen by the wayside. I know there's been communication, but I'd, I'd kind of like to get that resolved, and I just want to say I'd be very disappointed if for some reason we found a way for everybody else, but, um, the retirees who, and I want to make sure they legitimately, which they did, worked during COVID, um, they're entitled to also get that benefit. So I'm not looking for a discussion on that. I just wanted to put it out, and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to follow up on our very successful town day, helped by probably just about the best weather that you could ask for, for town day, so the results aren't always typical, but, you know, it was a culmination of a ton of work, a lot of people in this room. The chair led the way and, uh, with Kathleen Darcy from Cambridge Savings Bank, Bob Bowes, um, Jeff from ACMI, too many people to name, but it was really a, a team effort. It was a lot of work, and we were warned, but it turned out to be an excellent day. I think it was clear from the attendance that the residents of the town wanted us to have town day, and we'll have it going forward. We have already had, set our meeting for next year's town day, and we've kind of looked at this town day to see if there were any improvements, what we did right, and where we can have room for improvement on timing and whatnot. But again, it was very successful. I was down there at five o'clock, and I think Jim Feeney was probably there for about thirty minutes at that time, working away, so he put me to shame, but, um, a lot of work, the DPW Police Department, Fire Department, too many to name, but again, but it was a fun day. Everyone that I know was very thankful that we brought town day back, and everyone that was there had, had a great time, so. Thank you all who participated and came to town day, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Holland?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hurd, Mr. Diggs, and all the people you just mentioned. Uh, I was, I had a great time at town day, and I had a great time watching thousands of people have a great time. It was a joy to see it back. Um, and I am really grateful for your vision, your persistence, and your really hard work, all of you who made that happen for our community, once again. Um, my only new business is to suggest a new business, uh, to the chair, uh, and that is kind of to expand upon Mr. Schlichtman's suggestion in open forum. I think it, it could be, I would appreciate, uh, an update from the manager and whatever staffing it seems appropriate on the pro, on the progress, not only of that project, but on the, and the other major transportation and road safety projects that we have at various stages in the harbor. I know that we, our work is commencing on Mass Avenue, Appleton, with respect to funding and plans, uh, and I think that might be beneficial, and there may be things I'm not thinking about, but maybe, uh, some, something like that, uh, that could dovetail with, um, a top-level report from Tac on kind of how, how things are going. Uh, I leave that to, to you all, any capable hands, but, uh, I think that, I, I would appreciate that, and if, Mr. Chair, if you feel like that would be worth the board's time, I would welcome that on a agenda in the near future.
Thank you. You know, so my new business is, I was going to comment on town day two, you know, but Mr. Hurd did mention Mr. Feeney, uh, a couple times, you know, so, and, and he was very instrumental, um, in, in, uh, making things happen. And I also want to say that I got involved, uh, because I know that the Select Board staff, uh, was pretty stretched, you know, and so I wanted to help out in, in that realm as much as I could, and as much as I did, I also know that the Select Board staff still did a lot of work, you know? And when I had questions about what to do, because I hadn't done it before, I had this master spreadsheet, but still there were some things that I didn't understand, they, they were always very helpful and very gracious in answering the questions and helping to, to advance things, and knowing those last few weeks, I mean, they, they were doing a, a lot of work and, and, um.
And Fran Reedy.
Thank you. And she, she came back, uh, and, and, and she did, she did a lot of work, and we are rewarding her as we did with Kathleen, be for ten bucks for each year. She did fifteen years, and as I said, in, at town day, you know, even a thousand dollars a year wouldn't really compensate them for the work that they did, I mean, but, but we just want, want to express our appreciation in some tangible way, I mean, so that's coming her way, and and so, yeah, and I actually got to know Fran, uh, more through that than I had, you know, for my one year on Select Board while she was on it, um, while I was on it with, with her. Uh, so, so, yeah, and I was expecting Mr. Hurd to tell us what the date for next year is.
Which one?
Did he tell us that?
I don't recall.
Nine twenty-three, twenty. Twenty-three, nine twenty.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
But we're gonna double check the holy days.
Well, we did.
I did.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we, we did do the previous.
We did it in honor of Mr. Helms' birthday.
Yeah.
All right.
So I'll have, uh, it'll be the biggest birthday party ever.
Which is also your birthday, Mr. Hurd.
As long as there's a big cake at the center stage, I'll be happy.
Okay.
Sorry.
Which you will pop out of.
Excuse me.
You set it, you set it up. It's all right, you know? And, uh, and also Mr. Hurd's idea about having the fireworks on Saturday night, I think, was a, a really good idea. It was nice to kind of see the evening culminate with that, and, and, and the nice thing about the fireworks, I think, in Arlington is that you can kind of see it from most places. In Arlington, you know, I live in East, which is pretty flat, but, I mean, I can see them, I think, for those who live in the hillier areas, you can, you can kind of see it, so I thought it was just a nice way to, to end the night.
And the football players and cheerleaders and parents were very grateful, because every Friday night, they miss it. They have to be in a game.
Yeah.
Um, so they, they were thumbs up on that.
Right, so all around good, you know? And, uh, so, uh, yeah, uh, my only other piece of new business is that I am planning on, on reaching out to the Public Memorials Committee, be all my own, to just try to understand the, the basics about how the committee works before advancing more items to them, you know, uh, and so, uh, so just let you know that's, I'm working on that, and then, and then we will decide what we send to them, uh, be from town meeting or any other, uh, source, so, so there's that, and, and I think that's it for me.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
So on a motion to adjourn, Ms. Mahan, and a second by Mr. Hurd, Mr. Meyer?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsey?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Thank you.